Okay, let's move on to item four, please. Announcements. Sorry. Item A. Again, we are going to bring this up through this census topic time that we have available to us, but to fill out your 2020 census. As you know, it only comes around once every 10 years, then insurance San Bruno will receive our share of equal funds for park schools and other programs. And you can go ahead and visit my2020census.gov to fill out today. Item B. Receive report and review status of local emergency related to repairs to Crestmore Canyon and continuing declaration of local emergency. Director Tan.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council, Public Works Director, Jimmy Tan. On regards to the Crestmore Canyon project, I don't have any new information to share this, you know, council meeting. Agreement to repave the westbound lane of San Bruno Avenue has been routed to internal staff for execution. And once that agreement is executed, the city will receive the bonds and insurance and coordinate with the contractor to schedule the work. So currently, it's anticipated that the paving work will be completed sometime in June. So this concludes my quick presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Mayor Medina, you're muted.
Sorry. I didn't see any hands when I was saying I didn't see any hands from my colleagues. So thank you, Director Tan. We'll move on to item C. Receive update on COVID-19 response efforts. City Manager.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers at home. A few of us here are in the senior center, six feet apart, and ready to give you another update on COVID-19. So if everyone can see the PowerPoint, we will begin.
Not yet.
Now?
Not yet.
Share the screen. We have to share the screen. One second.
Javon, do you want me to pull it up?
Sure, we're getting it right now. Actually, one second, we will share the screen.
We can see it now.
That's our...
This is the...
It's our 200-slide budget presentation. We're going to pull up the one for Crestmore. It's a lot shorter. Okay, are we good now? Okay, provide an update to council on the general public. Our agenda, a quick five items. We want to give you an update. We've been presenting the county stats every meeting, so we want to do that again. We'll talk a little bit about the modification to the order, a number of resources that we want to highlight again. And then last time, we had a question on enforcement of various parking regulations and other police enforcement. And so during this presentation, our police chief, Ryan Johansson, will join me. So a little information on statistics. In the county, when we pulled these figures, as of May 25th, there were 1,904 positive cases, 82 deaths. What you'll see on the upper right-hand side is the deaths are, at this point, split equally between males and females, and the age group hasn't changed with the vast majority, all but one of the deaths being of individuals 50 years or older. But the positive cases, which is that portion of the screen on the bottom left that has cases by age group, the important point that we've noted before, but I wanted to highlight again, is COVID-19 as far as confirmed cases within our community, within our county, is affecting every age group. And so that's important for us to realize. For those of you that want these stats, I didn't make them up. They are on the county's homepage. From the county's homepage, you can link to the county health department and access these, and there's a robust data set available. As far as the number of cases, the last figure that was released by jurisdiction, there have been a total of 86 confirmed cases of COVID-19 since the data has been tracked within the city of San Bruno. That is 5% of the total cases in the county. By population, we are 6% of the county's population. And so it is relatively proportional. The number of positive cases that we have is relatively proportional to our population size that we see throughout the county. Next is an excerpt from the Phase 2 order from our county health officer. I know it's a lot of words, but I wanted to provide this excerpt because it's important. We are reopening society, and we are at what the state has termed early Phase 2. And businesses are reopening, and people can travel further from their home than they could before. And on the next slide, we'll talk about that. But this is important. And what it says is, "Progress on COVID-19 indicators related to hospital utilization and capacity makes it appropriate at this time to allow certain additional businesses and activities to resume with conditions." But there's a but. And the but is from our county health officer, "But I want to remind everyone that these modifications to the shelter-in-place are not being made because it is safe to go out and about. The virus continues to circulate in our community, and this increase in interactions among people is likely to spread the virus at a higher rate." And so I think we've all heard that in the national news, and we've heard that in the local media, but it's being repeated by our county health officer, really as a reminder that the shelter-in-place and the restrictions on mobility were all in effort to lower the positivity rate. We will not, as a society, be back to our normal until there is a vaccine, a significant ramp-up in testing, or a treatment, a successful treatment plan for COVID-19. Neither of those three are on the immediate horizon. But we are starting to reopen our society with conditions, and it's appropriate that we all take the appropriate precautions. Sorry. Additional restrictions, just a quick note, there are so many, we just wanted to highlight a few. Certain businesses are now allowed to operate with curbside pickup. And so what we know is that our mall, Tan Fran Mall, the interior stores were not allowed to reopen in Stage 2, early phase, but now they are allowed to reopen with certain conditions. And some of those is that the products must be ordered in advance. That does not mean before you arrive, what it means is that you cannot go into the mall to pick out or order the product. You can arrive at the mall and order in your car, but you cannot essentially place that order in person with staff from that retail store. And social distancing requirements must be adhered to, and you must wear a face covering. Construction protocols were adjusted for large and small projects, and it removed the prohibition against traveling for recreation within 10 miles. You may recall, first, the limit was you cannot leave your house to recreate, then it was you could leave your house to recreate within five miles, and then 10 miles, and now that 10-mile limit has been lifted. Friendly reminder, here in the city of San Bruno, our public pools are continue to be closed, athletic fields, play structures, dog parks, public restrooms, barbecues, picnic areas, and sport courts. And so we continue to put out this information on various social media platforms and through our written communications and through Channel 1. Want to highlight, we talked about at our two prior meetings that a number of small business assistance efforts were underway, and we celebrated a number of them. One of the things that was mentioned that is now up and running was small business recovery and assistance, essentially technical assistance, funded by the San Bruno Community Foundation, but being really led by the Chamber of Commerce and the Bay Area Entrepreneurial Center of Skyline College that is housed right in our downtown on Samhitaill Avenue. And so that is up, that's running. It offers no cost, one-on-one expert advice, assistance, and workshops, and online resources, an important and a very needed tool because navigating all of the assistance and financial information that is out there, we know is a challenge for our small businesses, and we're glad that the San Bruno Community Foundation stepped up and partnered with our Chamber of Commerce and the Bay Area Entrepreneurial Center to fund this important effort. And so the email addresses are on the screen. Contact the Chamber or contact the Entrepreneurial Center for information and to sign up. Another important note is COVID-19 testing. This is really good news. The public may remember that we have been saying that there would be a relaxation of the requirements to be tested. And so now we are here. Free testing is available to anyone in our community. You do not need a doctor's note, you do not need a symptom, you do not need medical insurance. It is again being provided by Verily, which is a Google company that the county partnered with to provide free testing for Samhitaill County. They have a project baseline, and so there's a website on the screen, projectbaseline.com/studies/COVID-19. It is important for everyone in our community to know that this is not being offered everywhere. This is a special partnership between Verily and Samhitaill County to offer tests to anyone that wants it within our county and within our city. And it's a project baseline, and they really are collecting data because they know that data is the way where we can really find out what's going on and what's the true positivity level in our community, and we have to ramp up testing nationally. Tests are not available in every community, but it is available here due to the strong partnerships with Google and the county. Also, testing is no longer only available at the Samhitaill County Event Center. Testing locations for this free testing is now in East Palo Alto and in Daly City. It will be in Samhitaill on Mondays and Tuesdays, Daly City on Wednesdays and Thursdays, East Palo Alto on Friday and Saturday, and I think everyone is resting on Sunday. But the times are there. This information is on the city's website, and it can be accessed in various ways, and we'll talk about that. Support. We wanted to do a reminder that sadness, depression, and feeling anxiety around this time, everything in our community, everything in our society appears to have been upended. And mental challenges are real, and they're okay. And we wanted to provide three resources to the community that are watching this presentation tonight. One is the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline. That is 1-800-273-8255. The other resource is the California Mental Health Peer Support. It's a 24-hour hotline for peer support. That number is 1-855-845-7415. And then the next resource, because we know domestic violence has had an increase, not just in our county, in our city, but nationally during this time, and there's a 24-hour hotline for that, 1-800-300-1080. The web addresses are there, and this information is being pushed out to the community on our various social media platforms. So with that, the last update that I'll provide before we have the police chief is on our Great Plates Program. I talked about this two weeks ago at our last meeting, but it is available for anyone 65 or older. There are a number of criteria, but it does provide free meals delivered to anyone in our community that meets the criteria. So you must be 65, you must live alone or with one other eligible adult, you must not receive meals from any other federal or state program, and you do not have family, friends, or another caregiver that can help prepare meals, and you're unable to shop for meals, and you meet the income criteria, which is having less than $74,900 for a single person. So there are criteria, but we know that this will help a portion of our community. It is funded by the state, and it is available statewide, hence the criteria to spread the dollars where they are most needed. But our senior center and our staff at our senior center have been passing this information out, and someone on the comments earlier mentioned our senior center newsletter, and so this information will be disseminated through that mechanism as well. Okay, so with that, Ryan, are you on?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So thank you, City Manager Grogan, and good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of Council, and our community listening at home. I promised to be brief, but I know there was a question last time posed by a council member about what parking enforcement the police department is engaging in under the shelter-in-place order and what we are not. And so take a brief opportunity here to just clarify that a little bit. Essentially, the police department has stood up parking enforcement again, but only for violations that pertain to a clear public safety concern. Examples would be blocking the sidewalks, wrong-way parking, obstructing red zones, of course, parking without a placard and disabled parking, any roadway obstructions or blocking of driveways, blocking of handicap access ramps, and other parking violations that would be deemed to be hazards to the public. We are not enforcing most other parking laws. This includes timed parking, under the belief that it conflicts with the shelter-in-place order to have people coming out of their homes simply to move cars on a regular basis to avoid citation. So this includes our 72-hour violations, as well as the timed parking zones downtown. Those are currently still not being enforced in an effort to support the shelter-in-place orders and encourage people to stay home and stay healthy. Also, most registration-related offenses are not being enforced still. This was at a specific request that went out to all law enforcement entities in the state from the California Department of Motor Vehicles. This is because, obviously, for a long period of time, all of their field offices were closed and only recently have a couple of them reopened, and they're way behind in processing registration renewals and even clearing of suspended registrations. And so we are currently not enforcing those violations either. And also, street sweeping would be another one that we are not currently enforcing. I'll stress that these policies are being continuously reevaluated based on the continuous revisions that we're seeing to the shelter-in-place order, and I would expect in the coming weeks to see more regular parking enforcement continually being stood up. If we can move to the next slide. Just briefly touching on blocking sidewalks, because there have been camps kind of on both sides of the equation here, so those that are very pleased to see the increase in enforcement of this violation to add access for our community, and those who are not so happy with what have been parking habits over a long period of time that they're now receiving citations for. And so I just want to be clear that there's no question that the state has spoken and it has been upheld that blocking the sidewalk, hanging over the sidewalk in any way, shape, or form of a vehicle creates a serious hazard or potentially serious hazard for pedestrians. And this is not just in the event that they have to actually go into the street to get around a vehicle, but even if it forces them to go into the sloped portion of a driveway, this can be really dangerous for folks using wheelchairs, walkers, canes, strollers, anything really with wheels that has to navigate down that side slope. It runs the risk of pushing them into the street. And this is especially dangerous in much of San Bruno, where our streets are so narrow, and vehicles coming down the roadway with vehicles parked on both sides are not going to often see this pedestrian come into the roadway suddenly and prevents a really serious hazard. There's some obvious ADA concerns there as well, where these sidewalks are very clearly established to provide access to people, and us allowing that access to be obstructed is a concern, and so this is another reason for our enforcement. And also, just take a real brief moment here to describe that prior to beginning to enforce the blocking of sidewalks, we did a number of different warning campaigns, and we've issued in excess of 5,000 warning notices prior to beginning to issue citations in the past. And we went through another warning campaign more recently when we decided to stand up the block sidewalk enforcement during the shelter-in-place order. And this also was supported by a number of social media campaigns. We really made a very serious effort to get the word out that this was the new standard in San Bruno and the way we were going to do things in order to ensure access to the sidewalks. And so I'll be clear that blanketed enforcement is occurring at this point in time and will continue. So please, if you are in a situation where you're regularly blocking any portion of the sidewalk by parking your vehicle, even if the bulk of the vehicle is in your driveway, be aware that enforcement is occurring and will continue to occur, and you'll be looking at a $50 fine for that type of parking. And finally, just briefly touching on wrong-way parking, this is another type of parking that has been met with some scrutiny in terms of our enforcement. I just want to be clear that this pertains to parking your vehicle on the left side of the roadway as opposed to the right side of the roadway, so that you're in effect facing the wrong direction on a roadway. And the simple reason why this is so much more dangerous than I think people tend to think is because it puts the driver's side of 99.9% of our vehicles here in the United States, it puts the driver on the curb side as you are then attempting to pull into traffic whenever you leave. Your line of sight is severely obstructed and clearing the roadway ahead of you and even behind you before doing so. So this is really dangerous, again, even worsened on our narrower streets in San Bruno. It's especially dangerous for not only motorists, but for bicyclists and others that are legally using the roadway, and just pulling in and out is dangerous. In addition, we see a significant increase in parking-related minor collisions when parking on the left side of the roadway, and much of this is because we're simply not accustomed to parallel parking on the other side of the road. And when you add to that the fact that you're coming again from the driver's side of the car and trying to navigate that parking, it can be very difficult. Similar to with the sidewalk parking, prior to beginning to enforce wrong-way parking last year, we did a major warning campaign, issued in excess of 3,000 warning notices for this violation before we ever issued a single citation, and also supported that with a tremendous amount of social media presence in order to explain what we were doing. And again, this as well is a violation that is now being enforced in a blanketed manner, and you can regularly expect that if you are parking this way, you are likely to receive a $50 citation. So that's what I've got for you this evening in, by way of an update of our parking enforcement during the shelter-in-place order. I thank you very much for the time.
Okay. And the last thing I have is just a reminder that all of these presentations are on the city's website, so www.sanbruno.ca.gov/coronavirus. On that website, you can find a wealth of information, press releases, statements, and any contact information for any of the resources that we have provided at these presentations are again available on that website. Join our Facebook, join our Twitter, join our Instagram, stand for them. Thank you.
Thank you to City Manager and Police Chief. Any questions from my colleagues?
Disabling screen.
Through the chair?
Michael.
Just a quick question on, so Javon, as far as COVID-19 goes, we're still considered under a local emergency, correct? I mean, it wasn't advertised that way on the agenda, but that this is a report as a function of being under that state of emergency. Is that right?
Yes, that is true.
Okay. And is there any indication, or do we have any kind of indicators that would sort of tell us that we're getting close to being at the end of that emergency, or is that still so far down the road that we're not even considering it yet?
Yes, so the end of the state of emergency will likely occur when we go back to a, locally here, a Stage 1, where most businesses are open and we have limited precautions. That may or may not be before there is a full vaccine, enhanced testing data on, you know, what is the true positivity because we have tested a large majority of our population. I don't have a crystal ball, but I think we are several months away from that point. And I think we all have heard the talk about, frankly, what school looks like in the fall. And that decision will impact a lot, because if the kids are not in school, that impacts the parents and really our ability as a society to go back to our prior norm or some version of that.
And then just one more procedural thing, both for this and for the Crestmore Canyon. Shouldn't we be taking some sort of action every 14 days to extend it? Aren't we supposed to, like, or is it enough that we get the report and allow it to continue?
Per the city attorney, it's enough for the report.
Okay. All right. Just making sure we're not missing anything. Thank you.
Linda.
Hey. Thank you for the reports. I just had a couple of follow-up questions. For the COVID-19 numbers, should San Bruno be worried at all? I know that testing has recently become available pretty widely to anybody compared to before, and it's free. And the number jumped from, it was like in the 40s only about three weeks ago, to now being in the high 80s. So I heard your percentages, but should we be worried that that number's climbing quickly?
So we regularly look at the statistics countywide. When it was at 40 and when it's at 80, the relative proportion of positivity that we see in San Bruno is in line with our share of the population. The truth of the matter is, we do not have a robust data set on positivity or confirmed cases because we have not, until this point, frankly, even had testing available to everyone. And so as that number increases, as we, and if we continue along this path where our relative positivity rate is in line with our population, that is what we should expect, and we should hope for it to be lower. I think the, an elevated level of concern would occur if we approach a point to where the percentage of positive cases in San Bruno are greatly more than our proportion to our population. Now, that is true in some cities in this county right now. That is not true here. As we get more data, we will know more. But where we are now and where we were then, we're in proportion to what we should expect.
And then another question, two more questions. One is, any idea about when hair salons will be allowed to open? This has been pretty consistent. The governor has said it's really up to the counties at this point, and I guess where are we with this?
Sure. So I should caution all of these statements by saying I am not an epidemiologist, and the city of San Bruno does not control that, the county health officer controls that. But what has been said is personal services and large group gatherings may be some of the last services to come back online. I think we had our governor note that the, this may have changed with more data, but it was a few weeks ago, they were able to trace the first confirmed case in California back to a nail salon, and that was one of the reasons why personal services were not being, or nail salons were not being allowed to open statewide. I think things will change as we get more data. Unfortunately, here locally, we don't control that.
Okay, great. And then just one last question for Chief Johansson. Thank you for that report. I had requested an update last, at the last meeting, so I really appreciate the details that you provided in the slides. I just wanted to ask a follow-up question to that, which are around the hours of enforcement. What has been kind of interesting has been a group of residents who have wanted enforcement for a long time, and now that enforcement is happening, now I'm getting a group of residents who are unhappy with the enforcement that's happening, and I understand that it's a very delicate balance. So the, but the biggest complaint I've gotten from people who have gotten tickets has honestly been around the time. It's been, you know, two people contacted me about tickets at midnight, we got one at 4:30 in the morning, and then social media posts have been kind of all over the place. And so I'm just curious to know if there are specific hours that enforcement's occurring, or it's just 24 hours?
No, it's an excellent question, and we deal with the same dilemma, right? This balance of enforcement and discretion. And the, there are no specific hours of enforcement. The reason for the somewhat off-hours really just has to do with the The reason for the somewhat off hours really just has to do with available resources. As we talked about before, we are working very hard to restaff our parking enforcement division, but currently it is down a full-time, we have two full-time and three part-time CSOs in that division. And right now, it's only one full-time CSO. So they typically work daytime to do the more normal hours enforcement. We're falling back on patrol officers and asking them to augment in order to keep enforcement up during this difficult time. And usually that means we're using those graveyard officers during that sort of slower time of the evening when they can actually get out and do parking enforcement and it's not to the detriment of more essential policing activities. So we are attempting to make sure we're getting that key time of day where I know it's most important to get those cars moved when folks are actually using the sidewalks. But the goal here is that maybe by enforcing even through the evening, we're sending the message that you should never be parking, blocking the sidewalk and hopefully it creates the access we're looking for.
Okay, great. And through the mayor, I actually just had one more, one more question.
Please.
One, the other issue I guess I should have mentioned earlier is that some of the houses, especially on the east side in particular, are, have really short driveways, built pre-ADA, right? And so that was one complaint that I did get and I really didn't know how to answer it is I have a van and the van goes into the sidewalk. Can they park parallel blocking the sidewalk? They have to park the car somewhere, right? And I really didn't know, I didn't know what to tell them and it would be really great if you could provide some context there.
Sure. I mean, the law, right, to give the pat answer right away, the law reads that you cannot have the car with any portion of it hanging over any portion of the sidewalk. That being said, the way we've typically enforced this is that if we believe that without having to go down a downslope or leave the flat portion of the sidewalk, a wheelchair or stroller can safely pass, we genuinely, we generally do not cite. Sometimes with these driveways, that's going to be impossible while still parking in your driveway. So what we have done in the past is that it is technically illegal to park in the street and block any driveway, but we respond, we do not proactively enforce blocked driveways. We do that on a complaint basis only. So if residents are blocking their own driveway but not obstructing the sidewalk and parking completely in the street, that is not something that the police department enforces unless the resident themselves calls to say, my driveway is blocked. So if that's the question you're asking, that would be safe.
That's great to know. Thank you. Thanks for the report.
Jovan, City Manager.
Sure. So Linda, that is a really good question. And earlier...
Jovan, we can't hear you.
Okay. How about that? Perfect. Linda, that's a good question. In 2019, we took a holistic look at parking and one of the strategies that we came up with is to allow residents to take advantage of part of their private property to create a side driveway or even take out a portion of the grass. And council approved that a few months ago. In addition, as a part of that, specific to the example you raised of a long car and a short driveway that was built that way, we are also allowing property owners to inset their garage door to essentially extend the exterior parking strip. That was a sort of significant and sometimes unique change because most cities do not want you to make the garage smaller because then you may not have a car, be able to park a car in the garage. Part of the conversations we had is we sometimes have a double whammy, which is the exterior strip is too small and the driveway is too small. And so we felt that allowing them to compromise one of them, and it's typically cheaper to inset the garage door would be beneficial. And so that is existing city policy. A homeowner can contact the community and economic development department and go through that process. And so, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, colleagues? Okay. If not, thank you to both through your update and the report. Appreciate it. We'll go ahead and move on to the next item under announcements and presentations, item D, received presentation on the highlights of a 2020 community survey. City Manager.
Sure. Mr. Mayor, I'll do the introduction. We have two people that will...
Jovan, we can't hear you again.
Jovan.
Sorry, for some reason, my microphone goes away. I'll do the introduction. The, we have two people on the virtual meeting that will provide the presentation. One is from the Lou Edwards Group and another person is Brian Godby from Godby Research. Godby Research conducted a community priority survey for the city and they will be providing those results. Lou Edwards, we entered into a contract with to help us with our community engagement efforts and to help us as a ballot consultant as we really looked at opportunities to attain more revenue as we look at our transient occupancy tax. And so I believe we have Jennifer from the Lou Edwards Group on the call. So Jennifer, if you are available, will you pop up?
Hello. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Jennifer. Go ahead.
Hi there. So I will be very, very brief. I'm here with my colleague Brian Godby with Godby Research. As Jovan stated correctly just a moment ago, we are working with the city in a communications effort, community engagement effort to gauge our residents' thoughts on a multitude of different items. As Brian will discuss shortly, we entered into a community survey right as your community was beginning to shelter in place because of COVID-19. So quite a bit of our outreach and information gathering on your residents was their thoughts on the city's response to the crisis and how we may recover. So with that, I will introduce my friend and colleague and president of Godby Research, Brian Godby. Brian?
Thank you, Jennifer. I thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff. I assume you can all see the presentation?
Yes.
Great. Okay. So as you know, we were commissioned to conduct a survey in the city of San Bruno. The data collection method was online and via landline and cell phone. The landline, we completed 49 interviews. Cell phone was 80. The text invitations to an online survey were 446 and the email to online invitations were 50, completed interviews. As you can see, the online component has become the most significant portion of our interviewing. And if you were to look at the text responses via age group, you'd see that it's pretty representative, although just slightly underrepresented in the 65-plus category, which is why we still insist on doing landline calls because that's how we make up the difference. The universe that we surveyed was likely November 2020 voters. And as a subset of that, we looked at likely November 2020 homeowner voters in the city of San Bruno. We were in the field from March 23rd through the 29th. So as Jennifer mentioned, it was just really after the shelter in place had gone into effect. And so people were obviously at home. One of the things we've seen since the order began and even through the surveys that we finished this week, last weekend, is response rates are actually up. And it's because people are at home, obviously. And we haven't seen response rates like this in probably 15 years. So that's the only silver lining of the shelter in place that I can think of. Everything else is pretty difficult. The interview length for the phone component was 24 minutes. The overall sample size was 625 likely November 2020 voters, 354 likely November 2020 homeowner voters, giving us a margin of error of plus or minus 3.85 and 5.13% respectively. Jumping into the data, the first question that we asked, and we've been asking this since the first surveys that we've done after the shelter in place, was do you have a favorable or unfavorable view of the job that state and local governments, we actually called out Samhita County, city of San Bruno, and local school districts by name. And what you see here when you add the variance somewhat together on both sides of the equation is people have an overwhelming positive view. This was obviously back in mid to late March, so it may have changed. But we were at 65% favorable versus 16% unfavorable. That's a positive to negative ratio of 4.0 to 1, which is, I think, great. Now, interestingly enough, as this has gone on, we have continued to ask this question and we've done over 15 surveys since the middle of March. And we've seen this be as high as 75%. So as people became more comfortable, it's quite possible they became happier with the job that state and local governments are doing. We also asked a question that we brought back from when we were doing surveys during the Great Recession and that was an opinion on the direction of the economy. Obviously, this tells us how positive or how, what their forecast is looking forward. We were specifically interested in six-month timeframe. You can see about a quarter, 27% said better, 18% said about the same, and not surprisingly, 44% in round numbers thought it might be worse. The next question was what their opinion was, are they satisfied or dissatisfied with the job the city is doing to provide services? This is something we asked back in the 2019 survey as well. And while that was among likely November 29 voters, 2019 voters, and this is likely November 2020 voters, there's a difference in the turnout there, but you can see that we've gone up. We're now at 64%. We were at 59%. Statistically speaking, it's not significant, but it's certainly a direction we would obviously like to see it go. The ratio of positive to negative is 3.2. It was 2.3. We asked an open-ended question about what is the most important problem facing the city. Not surprisingly, the COVID coronavirus crisis was the top set of responses at 14% in round numbers, followed closely by affordability of housing and cost of living, which as we've surveyed repeatedly throughout Samhita County before the crisis were the top issues. And so they still are important, but just edged out by the current crisis. Switching gears a little bit to looking at perspectives on reinvestment priorities. The first question is support for a 14% transient occupancy tax, which is of course only paid by lodging guests, not by residents of San Bruno. And the way we look at this to determine feasibility is we add the definitely yes and the probable yes together. And you see that at 62% support. This measure requires a simple majority, so we're significantly above that one. The next set of questions that we want to present this evening is a list of priorities with respect to storm drains. So the way this question was asked is we read each of these items that you see on the slide in a random order and then asked the respondents if they thought it was extremely important, very important, somewhat important, not too important, or not at all important. We then create what you see here and what we call an intensity score, which is a slightly different way of looking at the data. It's this, these numbers right here. And the reason we do that is because if you were to just add percentages together, you could have something that was extremely important, 40, very important, 20, that's 60%, but you could have the opposite, 20% extremely important, 40% very important, that's 60% too, but it's clearly an entirely different 60%. So this intensity score is a much more nuanced way taking into effect all of the various responses to rank them. It's still important to look at the percentages and you can see the ranges here with respect to the blue arrow. We also look at what we call tiers and those are basically statistical groupings. So while there are numeric differences within a tier, they are basically tied from a statistical perspective. But it's still useful to look at the numeric differences as well and obviously for ranking. So in our top tier with respect to storm drain priorities, we have protecting clean drinking water. That's an group by itself and is statistically different from the other items down the list. In our second tier, we have repairing, deteriorating pipes and infrastructure to prevent system failures and sinkholes. The third item on the list is protecting water quality in local creeks and reservoirs and the bay. And then fourth is reducing pollutants flowing into the bay. And fifth is repairing and maintaining storm drains to prevent flooding, erosion, and water pollution. We've done a variety of storm water and storm drain surveys throughout the state. And this is a fairly typical ordering. It's not really different from other communities. So that's the summary for this evening and I'm certainly happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, City Manager. Do you want to conclude on anything or should I open up to the council?
Sure. I'll give a quick wrap-up. So one of the things that the city council asks us to look into is a TLT measure. And so that is continue, continues to be on staff's work plan. And we anticipate bringing forward everything the city council needs to make a decision on that and putting that question to the voters in June. And I'm sorry, in July because it is due to the county in August. And so this survey was a part of that effort. We wanted to provide you with the results of that and are happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Ryan and Jennifer. Any questions from my colleagues?
Mr. Mayor?
Marty.
Yes. Interesting. The data was fascinating. For the storm drain, it's nice to know that the public supports clean drinking water and safer pipes, but in the question, they didn't ask about are they willing to financially support it by paying more? Is that something that would be coming down the road or where are we leading with this?
We were looking for just their priorities at this stage. That could be something that would be a subject of a future survey.
Okay. That's all I have.
Thank you, Marty. Anything else from my colleagues? Not seen any hands. Then again, want to thank everyone for their presentation and we'll go ahead and move on to consent calendar.
I'm going to stop the participant sharing of the screen just one moment.
Let's pause for a moment. I see Linda's hand is up now.
Oh, for consent.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.